Meeting at the Village of Trustees for Tuesday, October 15, 2024. Please stand and say, "Pleasure, allegiance."
...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item is approve the regular minutes of the October 1st meeting. Second, any changes? We'll call vote.
Trustee Pashma?
Aye.
Trustee Braden?
Aye.
Trustee Stichler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Bean?
Aye.
So President's comments, Congressman Jesus Chui Garcia will be hosting a town hall meeting on Tuesday, October 22, 2024, at 6 o'clock PM at the Hinsdale Public Library. Congressman Garcia will share updates with residents on federal, state, and local matters. Residents who are interested in attending can register online via Eventbrite at dupageth eventbrite.com or by calling Congressman Garcia's office at 773-342-0774. Early voting for 2024 general election will take place from October 21st to November 4th at the Memorial Building for DuPage County residents. Voting hours will be from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM on weekdays and 9:00 AM till 5:00 PM on weekends. Additionally, the Memorial Building will be a polling site on Election Day, November 5. For a complete list of locations for early voting and registration information, please visit the DuPage County Election Commission's website, or for those residents who live in Cook County, the Cook County Clerk's website. The free weekly fall leaf pickup will begin on October 28th and run through December 5. Leaves must be bagged in craft paper yard wastebags and placed alongside the curb. For more information, please visit the village website. Okay, that takes us to first read. Luke?
Yep, uh, which moves us to Agenda Item 6A. Um, this is a text amendment to Section 9-107 of the code. Uh, it's relating to landscaping and screening standards.
Luke, I'm sorry, are we supposed to have citizens petition?
Oh, yes, good point. Citizens petition. Do you want to wait, talk now, or talk some other time, or not talk at all?
Maybe not at all.
Okay, okay.
No citizens to petition.
Can't believe we forgot about Bill.
Yeah.
All right, uh, so again, this is a text amendment, Section 9-107 of the zoning code. Uh, it relates to landscaping and screening standards. Additionally, and I'm going to go over this at the end, there are various sections of the code which are also being amended in order to be consistent with the changes to 9-107. I'm going to start this out by, you know, we typically go through two reads. This is, this is a complicated text amendment. There's a lot of details to it. If trustees feel that we should do three reads for this, I don't think there's any rush in this at all. Plan Commission's been working on it for eight or nine months, so just keep that in mind as we go through this. Uh, the text amendment has been pursued by staff at the request of this board. Uh, please recall, we have had difficult site plan reviews with regards to landscaping and buffering for commercial properties that border residential areas. Uh, for example, Land Rover with the fence and ongoing issues with plant size along Oak Street. Uh, I think we can all recall residents coming to see the plants weren't high enough and they're not growing. Uh, then also, uh, 110 East Ogden Avenue, uh, that was where the chiropractic office was, and landscaping along the back of that commercial property. And then lastly, Union Church and landscaping barriers between residential districts and its parking lot. This text amendment aims to minimize the impact of redevelopment on nearby residential properties by improving screening and promoting better landscaping practices. You know, if you look at our, our code or a general overview of our code, it provides for us and sets up so that we have so-called minimums and maximum requirements. For example, we have minimum front and side yard setbacks. We have maximum height for buildings. Uh, for landscaping in general, we've not had minimum requirements. Uh, this text amendment seeks to establish minimum requirements, not only between residential and commercial districts, but for all districts. Um, additionally, this text amendment provides for flexibility around landscaping and screening standards, which can be approved by this board on a one-off basis. Uh, this text amendment also promotes specified types of plantings, minimum planting sizes, and maintenance requirements. This was originally referred to the Plan Commission in January of 2024. The Plan Commission did hold public meetings in March, July, and August. Um, there was a material amount of discussion and debate about the requirements. Uh, ultimately, the Plan Commission made a unanimous decision to recommend the following changes to us. Uh, one, to increase the height of landscape screening. Uh, they, they actually ended up keeping it at six feet tall with a minimum landscape buffer of five feet along the side and rear lot lines of residential properties. Did I get that right, Bethany, at six feet as written now?
Six feet for the screening area between a non-residential and a residential property. And then they, um, upped the size of parking lot perimeter screening, so the area around a parking lot would be three feet tall.
Three feet, which is currently 18 inches.
It was, it was, uh, lower previously in the previous version.
Okay, thank you. A minimum, a minimum height for fence along any rear lot line. So, you know, we've got minimum, we're establishing minimum requirements for landscaping and also a minimum height for fence. So, it's my recommendation, like, for example, behind 110, we put up arborvitae that were, I think, were 10 feet or taller, and we didn't have a fence. I think that, while the Plan Commission, they went back and forth quite a bit, and they said six feet for both, with the flexibility that this board, that this text amendment gives the board, I think we should start out at eight feet for both, with the ability to go down to six feet. So, for example, if we have a commercial property that is building up against, uh, you know, a, a, a large area, a wooded area, we could go down and reduce any landscaping requirement they have. But if we do have a situation like 110 East on Ogden Avenue again, we can require that eight feet. And all of us sitting in this position before and, and going back and forth with developers, I always think it's easier to go down than it is to say, "Hey, you have to go up." And if we start at six feet and say at six feet, then we've got to tell potential commercial developers, "Oh, you have to go higher than what the code outlines," even though we have that. So that, that would be my suggestion, but I, I think we should, we should discuss that. The text amendment also clarifies that berms are still subject to a minimum height requirements. We've had a lot of times where, you know, developers will come in and say, "I don't need to put up a eight-foot-tall tree because I've got a four-foot berm, so I should only put up a four-foot tree to get a total of eight feet." This clarifies that berms don't count in the height. As Bethany mentioned, a minimum planting size of 36 inches at a time that shrubs are planted around, uh, parking lots. So 36 inches, three feet tall, should stop headlights from going into residential properties. And there's always ambiguity in the code when it says, you know, when developers come in and say, "Well, within a year, it's going to grow by 50%." So it'll be up to 24 or 36 inches by that time. This clarifies that it's at the time of planting. There was discussion around a preferred plant list. I know we had, uh, trustee Fisher came and said we wanted to have, you know, certain plants that were preferred, uh, with discussion at Plan Commission. They also have that, but they said, "You know what? Let's leave that to the, um, let's leave that to the pros as far as, uh, the, um, who are the places around here that provide for that?"
Morton Arboretum.
Morton Arboretum. They always-
Chicago Botanical Garden.
Yes, both of those areas, or both of those entities provide preferred planting list. And what we've got in the, what we've got in this text amendment right now is we just defer to those, uh, to those organizations and their preferred planting list. We also have improvements to stormwater management, infrastructure, provisions for parking lots, and requirements for storage of snow, which we've never had before. So, in landscaping plans now, there's going to have to be detail of where snow is going to be piled up. We don't get snow anymore, do we, Neil?
Well, no, I, I just don't know how we're going to, you know, we're still going to get some snow, and, and what if we have this, okay, the snow goes here, and what if we got a big snowfall and, you know, well-
Well, that's why we've got, that's why we're going to have the flexibility.
Yeah.
But it's, they're going to have to outline-
We're still going to get snow.
We're, yeah, oh, yeah, but we just have, let's just say, we have to have a place of where they're going to put it if they, if they plow the driveways. Um, also, we're going to include, uh, outdoor refuse, storage, and service areas that have the same parking, or the same screening as parking lots. Uh, and add a section that the village forester would review existing vegetation and planning for applicability when reviews do occur. So if someone's coming in and looking at change and they have a site plan review, the forester will look at the existing plantings on the landscaping plan and make sure that it's a, that it's reasonable. Also then, maintenance of landscaping, uh, plan requirement of how it would be conducted, including routine watering. As was mentioned at the beginning of my comments, we're also amending certain other sections of the code, uh, so they remain consistent with the general applicable terms around screening and landscaping. Um, this is detailed, but I think it's important. Uh, and the other changes that, uh, are going to be made so that they're consistent is Section 3-106 regarding special uses, 3-110, uh, bulk space and yard requirements for a single-family residential, uh, 4-107 for multifamily residential, 6-110 special use for office, 9-101 special use for accessory structures, 11-503 for variations, 11-603 for planned developments, 11-604 for site plan review, and Section 12-206 definitions. All of the changes to those sections which I just mentioned, just make it so that the wording definitions are consistent with Section 9-107, which is where we're making all of those changes, but just, I wanted to make sure that that was clear, so that we're consistent. I would also note, at the last meeting, we approved the, um, community development consultant that we're using on a, uh, on an hourly basis. They were integral in helping with this. Yes, thank you, Fesco. Um, so that, that is an example of where that, that has been helpful. Again, and in summary, these amendments provide for clarity on landscaping and screen like, uh, regulations, and most importantly, for landscaping and screening requirements, the board has the ability to waive minimum requirements, which allow for a more efficient application process, as an applicant does not, will not have to go and attain a formal waiver from the ZBA. So, for example, if we have an existing property that only has two feet of setback between the parking lot and the property line, this requires now for new that it be five feet, the board can waive that rather than going to the ZBA. But again, that's only for landscaping and buffer requirements. So with that, I would open it up to questions. Input from Bethany and Rob, who've worked on this for nine months, anything I missed or anything you'd add?
Great summary.
Great.
So Luke, I did have, I had one question. So I mean, obviously, this is standards document, which is something that was sorely needed, um, which, you know, provides for, just as I said, the standards as it relates to, you know, bush height, things of that nature. The one, the one question that came to mind as I was reading through this document was the enforcement side.
Yeah.
And, um, that, I mean, that obviously isn't, that's not the purpose of, of this particular study. The purpose is standards, but to me, that's something that we'll have to use or go hand in hand, um, with regard to the enforcement of making sure that, you know, we, we've had kind of this pervasive attitude where people, you know, it's the, it's the cliche of forgiveness instead of permission, and how are we going to avoid that scenario? And so that's, that's the one thing that, that went through my mind as I was reading through this.
Yeah, I, you know, I've had discussions with regard to that, and in, in general, I think 90-plus percent of people comply. You know, they, they water, they water things so that they grow and they're maintained. Um, you know, it's the, it's the small minority where we don't have that, and really, we rely on residents to comment or ask us to fix it. I don't think staff has got the time to really, you know-
Oh, yeah, I'm just worried about situations where, you know, we, and without naming names, we've had, you know, one particular individual with regard to Land Rover that we've seen a lot.
Yep.
And, um, and it's a situation where you have complaints, or, you know, or we have a situation, uh, over on Ogden Avenue, um, where the individuals are like, "Why are we letting them come off permit?" You know, if they haven't complied with certain things. And then to me, it's, it's having some level of understanding of how do we avoid those scenarios?
Well, I mean, the way this would come up, right, is if somebody's redeveloping a property, they'd come with a design for a building, and these would kick in. That's a typical way it come up.
Or the Land Rover is an example.
Or Land Rover, or, or the, or the other building on, on Ogden you mentioned. But, you know, I wonder whether the village should be in the business of policing people watering flowers or plants down the road. I mean, it seems to me that that's really not, you know what I mean? That's, I, I don't know how you, how you handle that, but I mean, to, to, to have an enforcement mechanism where we're, like, you know, it's just not part of the approval process, but two years down the road, say, people come and say that bush died and they didn't water it, can you do something? I'm not sure that that's really the village's job.
And I agree with that. I completely agree with that. It's, I'm looking at more during the time of construction.
Well, no, growing-
You know, when they're under permit, that's, that's what I'm concerned about.
Right, but this would be, I mean, here, here's the way, this is why I think this is a good, good way for, we, as a board, have focused a lot on what the building looks like, right? The setback of the building, the height of the building. And in the last two or three projects, the only snags we've run into have been landscaping. The buildings have been fine, and all of a sudden, somebody comes back and says, "We don't like the landscape, we don't like the bushes," or whatever. So, so that's why I think this is good to codify this, and so we have a baseline that we can deal with. But I, I view that this is be part of the process. So now, when we're looking at the building, you know, we're also have this, these text amendments that say you have to have so many trees, you have to have so many shrubbery, you have to, the trees have to be a certain height. And if somebody wants to change them, like they'd have to change some aspect of the building, they'd have to ask for variance, and then, and it highlights the issue.
Yep.
It highlights the issue. We just, we don't just look at it and all of a sudden say, "You know what? Those trees are only three feet, we, that's too short." We really didn't focus on that because we were looking at the building. So it, it would like bring to our attention things that are varying, vary from the standard, so we could focus on. I mean, that kind of, to me is, you know, and this has given a lot of thought. So these baselines, while they may not be perfect, at least they're done in the abstract without any particular property in mind, what everybody thinks is a good idea. Now we have a baseline, and we can deal with it on a, on a project-by-project basis, and modify this if we have to, but, but it would, it would be, it would put it into stark relief that this is an issue. These trees are shorter than they should be, or, or, or the, you know, that the land is, you know, closer to the, to the property line than, than we had envisioned, or something like that. So, I mean, I think this is, I mean, I don't, I don't know that, from my perspective, I'm more glad we have this than to take issue with any particular aspect of it. I mean, I think having a baseline that people thought about is a good starting place for the board to move forward.
Agreed, and that's, and that's not, we did not have that at all.
No, we didn't have anything. And then you're surprised by, it's a great building, and somebody comes in and says, "Well, but they cut down all the trees." Well, we didn't know that, you know? So, uh, I, I do think this is a great way to do it. And then, what about, I, I didn't see this in it, but what about existing trees? Do we have anything in there about, you know, having to, to talk to us about existing mature trees on a property if they were to redevelop?
There is a section under the general requirements about, uh, reviewing the existing vegetation.
Okay.
That would be brought in as part of the landscape plan.
Okay.
Um, and they can use that as part of the compliance, but obviously, we'd want to preserve what we can as well.
Right, right. But, but to me, the whole point is to surface the problem.
Yep.
Right? I mean, that's kind of what this is all about. And this, having a, having a baseline like this surfaces the problem, so.
Um, I wanted to thank Bethany and Rob and the Plan Commission for their hard work here. I've read through all of this, I know we all have read through this, and it, it is a lot. Um, I believe these measures will certainly enhance our village landscape, and it will make it easier for all of us to navigate landscaping plans here. Um, the goal is to help further beautify Hinsdale. And these amendments, they will provide consistency related to the landscaping plans. This amendment would provide clarity related to the landscaping plans, and along those lines, and with what you said, Tom, is I've requested that we kind of have a cheat sheet or a cover sheet, which outlines, you know, suggested trees, like, suggested trees be clearly outlined, suggested plants be clearly outlined. Um, and also, if we could provide examples of what we have liked in the past and what we have approved. Um, again, the key is here to provide a baseline, so we know where we're at, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, we don't have to reevaluate everything. We have some guidelines here in a cheat sheet slash cover sheet that will, you know, outline what we are looking for. Clarity is key, and I believe this will get us to that point.
Yep.
One question that I will open up for a discussion if we want. Driving here, you do see some trees going in right now. They're tiny, they look like a little peanuts tree. Should we think about maybe, maybe making the caliper three inches or maybe a little bit bigger that we are requiring folks to put in? It's a thought, you know, I don't know what anybody else feels about that. Um, I do, don't think we need something that's gigantic, but maybe something that's a little bit more robust will help make the landscape look a little bit mature, little bit more mature from the get-go.
It's reasonable.
Be good to get John's opinion on that.
Yeah.
We can come up with- Again, thank you.
Yeah.
I have some questions, or Neil, do you want to go first?
Uh, okay, let me ask one question. I think President Colley might have already addressed it. Page seven, uh-
And are you in the actual ordinance?
Oh, yeah, I'm in the actual ordinance. Page seven, uh, talks about the components of a landscape plan. So, it lists a whole bunch of stuff here for a landscape plan, and I'm, I'm certainly not an expert on landscape plans. So like with McLaren, when, you know, they, it's one of our most recent projects, and I know they did a lot of landscaping around that, so did, would they have covered, would they have met the requirements of all of this stuff? And, and maybe they don't have to, based on what you were saying. They're not, first of all, they're not abutting any residential property. That's one difference, I think, for some of the things we've looked at, but I, you know, I, we didn't have, obviously, this wasn't passed at the time we approved that. And then, the other thing I thought, I looked at this, is this over the top? Is this too much stuff? But, but like you said, we don't have to have them do all of this stuff necessarily. But it gives you, but what I, what I'm saying is, when, when somebody asks for a variance from something, then we know what it is. We know what the Plan Commission thought about, what the staff thought about as a standard, and whether or not it makes sense to deviate from the standard, we can obviously do, but then we know we're deviating, and we make a, we make a, you know, considered decision to deviate from that. So, I think a lot of context to it and a lot of detail is helpful because it, it raises those issues to the front. Somebody thought about this, is what we should be doing in the abstract, so how does it apply to the situation that is before the board? So I think this is a great piece of work.
If I may, for what it's worth, this is not unusual. Bethany looked for most of this when we did the review for Mouse Motors, anyway. So this isn't-
So we just codify things we were looking at?
Right.
These are pretty standard requirements. If a landscape architect is putting a-
It just seemed like a lot of stuff.
The new things that are a little bit abnormal compared to other places that they don't always require it, uh, require it is the snow remover or snow storage area. That was a, a recommendation by the Plan Commission. And then we did ask, we are asking people to just tell us how they're going to water things, and that's for the enforcement side of things, just so we know-
Right.
-that they have a plan for keeping those plants alive.
Is it-
Um, even if it's a water truck, at least we'd want to know what the plan is.
Should we, what about the thought of having, requiring sprinkler systems? I mean, to the extent that we don't want to police these things, if we require a sprinkler system, at least we've done something to ensure that things will, is that, is that over the top?
I wonder if that would be difficult with, outside of churches that would have more green space, a lot of these are parking lots.
Right, right, right.
Just thinking the infrastructure of, of getting that in-ground sprinkling system in place.
Yeah.
Bethany or Rob, does it give you enough wiggle room at EG that Neil was just speaking about, of location of any underground irrigation system? So, that's on our punch list?
But so if-
I think certain, some people use a truck.
Yeah, they drive around and make-
Yeah, right.
The village does.
Yeah.
With the water, first of all.
Right.
Well, I just planted, what, 14 arborvitae on my side yard, and they put up SOCOs in and put on a timer.
Right.
So maybe we could require something like that for a couple, because it takes, for, for bigger trees like arborvitae, you know, it takes you two years for them to actually root, the root system to develop. So maybe we, you know, what they do is they wrap up SOCOs around it, and maybe we require something like that, just so things just don't die the first year until they get rooted.
I think especially what we've seen in, um, the residential side of things is a lot of the arborvitae's go up during the earlier part of construction, and so you're still permitted.
Right.
And these arborvitae's are dying. We have a, a great case on Oak Street, Oak and Seventh, where they were dying. So I think that, that is something, I think, very early on that you'd need to get a head on.
Right.
And, and it's easy, you know, to move the SOCO sprinkler every tree.
Right, 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 right. But that's a thought. Yeah, I think we should, yeah, we can do that.
My question, I don't think it's a question. It's, so, I think for a lot of this, it would be, I'm thinking, um, you know, these institutions that would be embedded in residential areas would be in, in my mind, churches, and I know a lot, a lot of these churches are developed and not redeveloping, but how would that look in terms of, would we take a look at, or would it open the door for people to look at, you know, their church down the street from them, or a lot of properties abutting a church, and, and taking a look at this, the neighbors looking at this new text amendment and saying, "Hey, you know, this doesn't fit."
We can't do it, we can't apply retroactively, right? This would be for, this would be for redevelop-
So that was my comment, so we'd have to wait for-
Yeah, for redevelopment.
Redevelopment of the church, and I think that was what I was trying to-
Or the minimum of major adjustment.
Major, yeah.
This was part of a huge project.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
And what we have here with the flexibility, so for example, if they wanted, if you have a church that's embedded right in a residential neighborhood, and you're following the letter of the law here, they'd have to put up six-foot fence and six-foot arborvitae all the way around the side yard and rear. We have the ability to waive that because it doesn't, you know, we might say, "Hey, we only want it in the rear yard."
Right.
"We don't want it in the side yard, so it keeps the residential look."
Exactly that, okay.
The board's got the ability to do that.
Right, because obviously, that wouldn't fit with, you know, the multiple churches on my street.
Right, and the way that would go through, would go through the Plan Commission, they would come back with a recommendation, and then it would be up to us.
And we waive that. Thank you.
I've got a few questions.
Yeah.
So, I read in a few places, just in the discussion, that there was a requirement to have a wall and landscaping, and I didn't see where that came up in the ordinance itself. It talked about, like, like I'm looking on pages eight and nine, where it talks about having a combination of different things, including walls and landscaping, but I didn't see where-
It doesn't specifically require a wall.
Okay.
But it gives the flexibility to do, to do a combination of screening.
Right, that's what I saw, right?
Yep, and that was specific to what we just discussed, of there may be a case where you couldn't even fit both.
Right.
And maybe, or there might be a case where a, a residential neighbor doesn't want a fence, or one or the others, so that discussion can be there.
Okay, that, I'm, I'm totally fine with that. Another question I had, so for the, um, the perimeter around, uh, the parking lots, I was wondering why it wasn't an option to have, like, a low wall around? And I can think about certain, you know, circumstances where you might rather have, you know, like a three-foot wall rather than landscaping. I know it, it talks about, like, at the entrance to the parking lot, having like a little wall, but like, you know, you could see where like, um, you know, like a car dealership for, you know, security reasons may like the idea of having, you know, a wall all the way around. Yes, a wall all the way around, uh, the property, um, rather than some landscaping.
Right, but that would be for the car dealership, but I think the residents would rather have landscaping, right? Because they don't want to see the, the tops of the cars. Right, wouldn't they want to have something that's higher than a three-foot wall?
Well, if you, the, the, uh, I'm, I'm looking at the plantings along the edges of parking lots, it, it only has to be three feet tall.
Right, but that's, that's to start with, right? Won't they grow taller?
They would grow taller.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know, would a shrub necessarily grow taller?
Yeah.
It's not a tree. It's not a tree.
If I lived next to a dealership, say, and there were cars in and out, or test-driving cars, I think I would want.
Vegetation.
Well, obviously, yes, vegetation, but not a fence, but a concrete buffer.
Like a three-foot brick wall.
So is this, is this a safety issue or is this an aesthetic issue?
Right.
Well, well, I, I guess my point is that you might, you might have safety or security reasons why you'd prefer.
Right.
A wall.
Right.
And so if you, if it, you know, if the wall was aesthetically pleasing, whether it was stone or brick or something like that, shouldn't that be an option?
Okay, all right, but, okay.
It is.
It is, yeah.
If you look on page 11, you see under planting, it's an alternative. Okay.
It is an alternative. It'd be something that would be brought to the Plan Commission and the Village Board. And there may be cases like, I'm sure you guys have seen this, even like a good example, McDonald's does this a lot. Not that we have that, but like if you're at an intersection corner, sometimes they'll do a nice cute low masonry wall. And it doesn't mean they have like all the screening around it, but they might use it as like a decorative feature. But it'd be something that would be brought forward, and if it wasn't a good idea for that particular site, or we really did need the screening, it could be looked at differently. But providing some flexibility, because walls sometimes are a little bit better in a more of a downtown environment versus bigger shrubs. We just added it in to, to give the alternative option, but either way, that would be approved by the Village Board.
Okay, so the, so the reference to parking lot edges, that's like basically the all-the-way-around parking lot?
Correct. Yep, except where you'd have like the residential side, like a three-foot wall would not work there.
I, I see, okay.
That wouldn't be used for like the screening between residential. That's just to screen the actual parking lot from the sidewalk in the street.
Oh, 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 okay. Although the wall, in lieu of the plantings, really would have helped us out at Land Rover.
The wall, yeah.
So what's, what's the difference between B, I'm looking at the bottom page 10 and top page 11, what's the difference between B and C?
Um, B just talks about the location and the width of that area around the parking lot.
Okay.
So it can't be, it says where it would be, so this would basically be the front and corner side yards. Once again, this wouldn't apply to like any of the buffer areas between single-family residential. Just kind of those street edges to, to give some screening from, from the actual sidewalk or the street. And then C talks about the planting options. So we, we went over this at Plan Commission where we definitely wanted that minimum height to at least be three feet.
Right.
And then there may be cases where a low wall with some shrubs, perennials, other things to also break up the wall, might be something to consider.
soften it up a little bit, okay. All right, okay. Okay, and then my, the last question I had, and this is the requirement for having sort of, you know, the islands in the parking lot. And so I, the standard here is fifteen spaces. And I just was wondering like what was the thinking in terms of the fifteen space, you know, minimum? Why not ten? Why not twenty? I, I, you know, I'm not, I was trying to sort of visualize different properties around town, you know, that, you know, that were inside or outside of that limitation. I just, I, any, any thoughts on that?
I think that's just a standard requirement for most municipalities. That's just the, the number that they use.
Okay.
It by all means doesn't mean that it's going to work everywhere. And the nice thing with this is we have added a section of, you know, there may be, like you just said, there might be a parking lot that has only ten long, but it's got, you know, three or four rows deep. And so we're at least allowing people to combine where necessary to. So there is some flexibility, I think, written in where we did allow people to combine if needed. Yes.
Okay, yeah, I, I don't know that I have an opinion, just, I just.
We've got that already in there. I've seen this before in other communities. I think that's really important because if you look at a large parking lot that doesn't have any at all, it's just straight white.
Right, yeah.
Not good.
Right, right.
So to clarify. You would only need interior parking landscaping if there was a parking lot with fifteen spaces.
Right.
So no, nothing with less than that would need interior, but they'd still do the exterior.
Right, right, yeah.
And then the, every ten spaces, that's pretty standard.
Okay.
Just with how other codes have done it.
I got a couple of those. Yeah, um, page 11, we're kind of talking about that. If I look at the picture on page 11 and say that it's the Land Rover dealer and the principal structure is the, let's say, the showroom.
Yep.
Is the public right-of-way, could that be Ogden Avenue? I, I assume that's Goodwood Street?
In that case, it would have been Ogden and Over.
Yeah, okay, so we're saying that they have to, now these trees that are right on Ogden, those are not, not trees, I guess, that we have to put in, but these green trees, they would have to put those in. And it would seem to me the car dealer would want to have, you know, they want to show their cars to people driving along Ogden Avenue. And, and this is something we could just say, well, okay, forget it. You don't have to do this, I guess.
Right, right.
For that case.
Right, right.
Okay, all right, good. Okay, we'll know the quick one then. Page 13, I may not be looking at this right, residential recreational facilities. It says outdoor residential recreational facilities in a single-family residential district. If you have some type of entertainment, like a trampoline or a jumpy jump. The, the way, the way I read this probably incorrectly is that it has to be invisible from the street. Is that, is that what we're saying there?
This is our existing code section, so nothing has been proposed to change on this. But we can clean up the language to make it a little bit more clear. We just haven't changed subsection J, K, or L. Those are all the existing.
Okay, yeah, because being a friend of mine's got a, I can see the trampoline in their backyard from the street, but I mean.
You can see a lot of trampolines in side yards.
Yeah.
Some in front yards. It's just, it's, it's in, it's in the existing code. It's just, at least in the 20 years I've been here, it's something that I, it's just not been enforced.
Yeah, this goes to Scott's enforcement issue.
Yeah, yeah.
It's, you know, but if someone puts a trampoline in their front yard.
I thought this was, I thought this was new here.
Or somebody has a tennis court in their side yard.
I'm just saying it like a pool, right?
Yeah, you can't put a pool in front of it.
No.
She'll want me to do that, too.
I tried.
Okay, I'm done. All right, Scott?
The only, the only other question, again, I keep circling back to enforcement, and I know this is about standards, but one of the questions that I, that, that again came to my mind was that, does, and it's more of a question than anything else, is that, what is the village's obligation in terms of the enforcement piece of it? So for instance, you have landscaping that, you know, that, that doesn't survive every, are we obligated for two years? Are we obligated for 60 days? What, what's the duration of time?
So for example, when you have a site plan approval, the landscaping plan is approved, and this is the way that it exists now. So if we, let's take 110 Ogden Avenue for an example. If those, if those arborvitae trees die three, four years down the road, they're not in compliance with their landscaping plan then. They have to replace those. So again, I think realistically, the way that it works, we're not out policing those trees, driving by them once every six months. If the house behind them complains and say, hey, they're not, those trees are dead, they're obligated to go out and replace them. But that, that's what we have now.
So it's built into permit, basically?
Yep.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay.
Again, so one thing that we haven't talked about is we've, it's written in here right now that, and I'd like consideration from the board, trustees, and President Colley, we don't have to do this, but we've got six feet for arborvitae, and we've got six feet for fencing, or any combination thereof. Would the board have the authority to increase that if necessary? So if we were in a situation like 110 Ogden Avenue, we would probably increase the height of the trees or Land Rover, where it's a heavier commercial use versus an office or a dentist office, you know, we're going to increase that. Should I just submit this for everyone's consideration? Should we start at eight feet and give us the ability to decrease it?
I think that's appropriate. I think so.
The, the thing you have to worry about, because I know this because they planted trees, is the taller the tree, the bigger the ball, the less close you can plant them together. So if you have too high arborvitae, you, the trees will never go to grow together. You know, smaller trees will grow together because they have a smaller ball, and the landscaper will put one next to the other. So you got to worry about that. That's the only issue. But I don't know that the difference between eight, eight and six makes a difference, because I was using like 14. So, so, but I, I agree. It's, it's always easier to go down than up.
Yeah. So let's do that with both, and.
Thirty-six inches is staying.
Yes, yeah, I think thirty, and that was a big, that was a, and was Alexis just asked, is, you know, thirty-six inches for around the parking lots? A lot of the plan commissioners wanted to leave it at eighteen to 24 inches, but one of the plan commissioners did a great deal of research on other communities, and thirty-six inches was pretty standard.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah.
So again, there's no rush to this. We can put it on for a second read next time. I've got follow-up items for a cheat sheet. We talked about minimum size of trees already. We talked about the required water plan, or, you know, making sure that that's included.
Yep.
I would suggest we put it on for a second read, but again, if trustees read more carefully through this or something comes to them, there's no rush. We can, you know, put it on for a second read at the, at the meeting following that.
Because we just got it Friday, too, and there was a.
Yeah, there's a lot here.
There's a lot Sunday, and I mean, Alexis had a read.
It took Plan Commission nine months, so.
Yeah, no urgency.
No urgency on this, yeah. But I think it's a.
It's great.
It's a good move.
It is a good move.
Really well done. Yeah, well done by the village.
And one thing, one thing I would applaud staff for on this, you know, this is, we all have this at work. This is one of these projects which is not a necessity.
So usually it doesn't get done.
So it doesn't get done?
Right.
This is something that they've, they've driven, gotten.
Because we'll wish it was done when we have our next development.
Right, the next Land Rover comes, we wish that we had it. Same thing with the lighting plan.
Right.
Yeah, because the project may not come up for two years.
Right, exactly. Okay, great.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to accounts payable, I think.
Okay, I had the, I had the suitcase, and it's carefully stashed in the trunk of my car, Carrie. I just wanted to know that. So maybe I'll get it after a meeting. But I found everything to be in order, and I'm going to move to approve payment of the accounts payable for the period of September 20th, 2024, through October 10th, 2024, in the aggregate amount of $1,373,573.74, as set forth on the list provided by the village treasurer, of which a permanent copy is on file with the village clerk. Second. We'll call vote.
Trustee Pashima?
Aye.
Trustee Braden?
Aye.
Trustee Siffler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Banky?
Aye. So we have one consent agenda item 7B. Can I have a motion with respect to that?
Move to, move to approve consent agenda item 7B. Second. We'll call vote.
Trustee Pashima?
Aye.
Trustee Braden?
Aye.
Trustee Siffler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Banky?
Aye.
Matt, 7A, grade A?
Eight A, yes. Item 8A, second read. This is a resolution determining the estimated property tax levy for 2024. Talked about this at our last meeting. Property taxes represent 40% of the village revenues, although the village's portion of your property tax bill is only about 7%. Our general policy has been to raise property taxes as, as much as we can within the statutory limits in order that we can keep up with, you know, our expenses. The levies are generally capped at the lesser of 5% or CPI plus new construction. So CPI for the last year was 3.4%. And then with the new construction, it's based on the 2023 permits. The estimated increase in EAV for the new construction is 16.33 million. And so the increased property taxes as a result of the capped portion of our levy is 4.19% or $8,740,598. First, for the 8.7 million, the first portion of it is allocated to our police and fire pensions. Those actuarial requirements are determined by state statute. They're both over $1.3 million. The police pension liability in particular went up quite a bit this last year. And then the, the remainder of that 8.7 million is going to be split equally between police and fire protection. We also have uncapped amounts of about $334,804. And there's a small piece of our fire pension liability, which is uncapped. We have our Gateway Special Recreation Association for disabled residents, which is uncapped. And then we have one unabated debt payment, which is uncapped. So our total estimated village levy would be $9,75,402. That's a 4.14% increase for the village's portion. And then we also have the library portion, which is going to be determined by the library board. But if that increases at the same rate that we're able to increase, which is the 4.19% for the capped portion, that would be a little over $3.8 million. So our total estimated levy, village and library, again, subject to the library board's determination, would be $12,908,521. Again, that's an aggregate 4.15% increase. And assuming we pass this resolution, the next step would be at our November meetings to consider the levy ordinance and the abatements for debt payments where there's alternative revenue sources. Carrie, anything else?
That's exactly it. Thank you.
All right, excellent. Any questions? All right, in that case, I will move to approve a resolution determining the estimated Village of Hinsdale real estate tax levy for year 2024.
Second. We'll call vote.
Trustee Pashima?
Aye.
Trustee Braden?
Aye.
Trustee Siffler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Banky?
Aye.
So 8B, do you want me to take that, Matt, or?
I can do it.
Okay.
But feel free to.
Go ahead.
Yeah. So item 8B, which President Colley talked about in our discussion point of our meeting, at our last meeting, is to provide for a public hearing for establishing a special service area for Sixth Street between Garfield and County Line Road for the reconstruction of the existing brick road. So as President Colley discussed our last meeting, Sixth Street is one of the last brick roads in the village. And the state of Illinois has required that the water and sewer infrastructure under the street be replaced. And as a result, that means that the brick road also has to be replaced. And there's been many discussions with the residents of Sixth Street over the last year as to how that road should be replaced, whether we do it with asphalt or with brick, and, and how to pay for it. So the, the estimated marginal cost of having a brick road instead of asphalt is thought to be about $2.8 million. And the village has offered to residents to pay the cost of a hybrid approach, which would basically be having asphalt streets and then having brick intersections and then crosswalks, and then sort of the entrance, entrances to that's the Sixth Street corridor on the County Line and on the, the Garfield side. And so the, the special service area would pay for the additional cost of a full brick road on Sixth Street, up to $2 million. The proposed special service area, although this will ultimately be determined at the hearing, is proposed to be composed of 38 properties, which are abutting Sixth Street between County Line and Garfield Road. And it's proposed that the additional property tax levy would take place over a 10-year period. The village would also have the ability to do a financing with bonds to finance the cost of the property for, also over that 10-year period, at an interest rate of up to 7%. And that additional finance cost would be also included in the property tax levy. Residents would have the ability to prepay their portion of the cost of the brick road in order to avoid having to pay those interest costs. And if the village was able to obtain additional funding before the ordinance passes, that $2 million amount could decrease. Now, the, the public hearing as proposed would be on December 17. Notice will be published in the Hinsdaleian and will also be mailed to the residents in the special service area. After the public hearing, residents will have 60 days to object. And in order to object, you would need to have 51% of the registered voters in this proposed special service area, as well as 50%, 51% of the owners in the special service area. Both, both of those groups, you'd have to have 51% objecting. If there's no objection, then the village board could move forward to establish the special service area at the meeting on February 28th or later. Now, as I understand it, the proposal would be to put bids out for the road, both as an all-brick option and as a hybrid option in January, with the idea that the bids would come back in, in mid-February. Contract, again, assuming this all moves forward, the idea of that would be that the bids would be awarded in March, and then the construction could take place over the following year. Carrie or George, anything else you want to say about that?
One item about, you discussed with the prepayment.
Yeah.
So I think originally, we had assumed that it would only, residents would only want to prepay if it was a $2 million bond because of the interest costs.
Yep.
If the village obtains this alternate funding and is able to then reduce the special service area to a significant decreased amount, to where there would not be interest, there may still be residents that would like to prepay, because they'd want to be excluded from the special service area for whatever, you know, reasons, even though there wouldn't be an interest component. And we had discussed, this kind of came up recently. And we had discussed, this kind of came up recently, the timing of that. And just to be clear, it has to occur after the public hearing, but before the next board meeting. Is that correct, Michael?
Right, it has to, the, the latest that we can remove a property from the special service area.
Wait, are we talking about financing, we talking about properties?
Property, well, the.
If people prepay, they're, they're outside of the area.
Right.
So, so we hold a public hearing, the latest we can remove a property from.
The special service area based on prepayment or another board decision to remove it would be the next public meeting after that public hearing, or the next regular board meeting after that public hearing, so.
Public hearing on December 17.
So in January?
Yeah.
Yes. So we are kind of working through the mechanics of that and we're going to prepare documents related to prepayment. Now, the problem is, we won't know the, the total cost of the road yet because of the bid, so we're coming up with a plan to address that, where people repay and possibly get rebated portion of their, their prepayment based on it coming out lower.
Right, but, but from my perspective, I mean, I think a lot of the details will hopefully shake out as we go along.
Yeah.
Because I think, I mean, my thought is, the $2 million, the thing about an SSA is you can, you can, you can reduce it, you never can increase it, right?
Yep.
So, so, so as Matt said, we, we, we're going to pay $800,000 for the hybrid, we're also going to contribute that to all-brick road. So the maximum would be, would be $2 million for the residents. So if there's, if it's, if, if the bids come in slightly higher than that, we, the village would pick up the difference. We would, the residents would never be paying more than $2 million if that's, if that's what is required. Our hope is that between, because we're starting the process now, by the time that we get to the end of the year, we'll have a better feel for how much it would cost to complete the project and whether we can reduce the cost of the project. If we do that, it would come down, okay? And that's, and that's, so, so we can always reduce it, we can increase it. So my hope is, we put that as a placeholder. And my hope and, and my thought would be that by the time we get to the end of the year, that $2 million is going to be a, a lower. And as Carrie pointed out, one of the benefits to residents is if you bring that number down from $2 million, there's a possibility for the village to do internally finance it, rather than go out to, to a bonding agency, in which case, the residents would not have to pay the interest because the village would finance it internally, and in which case, it would probably make no sense to prepay. It only makes sense to prepay if you're, if you're cutting out the interest, because I mean, why, if you're going to, if it was a flat amount, why, why pay it upfront rather than pay it over time?
Right.
So, so I view this as a placeholder, and my hope is by the time we get to the public hearing on December 17th, and certainly by the time we get to the opt-out period in February, that we have a much lower number to work with. That's our hope. I mean, residents can always prove the $2 million, if God forbid, that's where we end up. My hope is we come to a much lower number, a number that, that we can finance internally. We should make it much, much lower, less than half.
We're not going to know the cost of the road until.
We won't, no, no, I, we, I'm, I'm, I think, the cost of the road, I think we've told residents, we, we've kind of done a lot of work on that. The extent it's slightly over, the residents aren't going to bear that. We're going to, we'll pick that up, to the extent there's a, there's a delta between what it costs, and I think there's probably, there's contingencies building, I, I don't think it's going to cost more, but certainly if it costs less, the, the, the cost of the SSA could come down. If you know that by, we, we, we'll get back the bids in mid-February. And if we, if we're close to that time, maybe we can just kind of move the February 16th objection period or something, I don't know. But I, the, the, it's so, not so much the cost of the project I'm looking to, as ways to, to supplement the funding for this, is what I'm looking to. And I think that's going to be the big, the thing we'll know by the end of the year.
Right, right. If there weren't additional revenue sources, are you, Carrie, are you comfortable with the 7%?
Yeah, that's the maximum. We had that vetted out by Spear, so.
Okay.
$2 million is the maximum bond, 7% is the maximum interest rate.
Okay.
Bill, you have any comments, thoughts?
I, I just want to clarify, so when we're talking about opt-out, we're, we're really talking about two different things. One is, a resident could opt-out at the board meeting in January from the SSA by prepaying their full amount, whatever that is determined to be by Carrie. That's different from a majority of homeowners and voters of record.
Correct.
Uh, potentially saying, we don't want to do.
Do it at all.
Do it at all, that, that deadline would come in February.
Correct, so, so in the event that somebody had prepaid and then it was later, an objection received that killed the SSA, that money would be refunded if all to those residents who prepaid.
And what happens if a resident, what happens if a resident's prepaid, the number goes down and we internally fund it, we refund, we refund the money?
Same.
Right.
Yeah, but when you say object.
Change the terminology?
Yeah, well, it, the objection would be if it meets those two criteria.
Correct. So there may be residents who don't want to be a part of it, but that's not. Based on the 50% of electors and 50% of residents. Yeah. Um, then the village is prevented from going forward, that's what we mean by objection. Right, right. But, but then, as I understand it, it's also possible for someone at the public hearing to say, I don't think I should be in the special service area.
Right.
Yes. And we could, and we as a board could decide whether we agree.
There are certain rules on that, too. You, it's got to be contiguous properties, right? You can't pluck somebody out of the middle of a special service area and say, you're exempt. I mean, I think, I think you can modify.
Right, I know there are rules on it.
Yeah, but it's got to be contiguous properties, as I understand it. Right, is that right?
That, that's correct, although in this case, because of the street being included as a parcel, everybody touches.
Okay.
So we're going to maintain continuity regardless. You could take somebody out.
Right.
And it would, everyone would still be.
Right.
Accesant to the street.
Right.
Which is, which is the, the 40th parcel. Yeah, correct, yeah. But then if you take somebody out, you know, everybody else's share increases proportionally.
Right, right. That's an issue I hope we don't have to address.
I hope we don't have to address that. I would just say that the resident group came up with the 38 properties.
Right.
Based not on, do you have a Sixth Street address, or do you have a driveway on Sixth Street, but rather, do you own private property that abuts Sixth Street on one of those four blocks?
Right, right.
That, that's, that's what we use to determine that. Otherwise, it becomes rather arbitrary.
It does become rather arbitrary.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just want to mention, I think someone said February 28th as the first possible day to adopt the ordinance, it's February 18th. And to be clear, you can't opt-out, right? There are ways to not be included in the SSA, and that would be through a prepayment, but you're not opting out.
Correct. Where would we vote on, on modifying the SSA? Would that be at the, at the December meeting?
Yeah, I mean, I, I really don't want to, I don't want to characterize that as an option. I mean, I think that, I, I think the way I would view it is, we have 38 properties and we approve an SSA for 38 properties. I mean, I think that if we start entertaining individual properties and that, I'd, I'd rather not, I, I'd just rather not go there. I mean, I think we, we take it as the, the resident group put it together and we, and we, we vote on. And if, and if there's 50, and if, if, if there's not the requisite number of, of property owners and registered voters who don't want it, you know, then, then obviously it fails. But I think tinkering with the number of, of homes in it is kind of, that's just, that's just asking for problems, in my view. I mean, I think there was consideration given by the residents for this. This is largely driven by the Sixth Street residents. And I think it has to be a pretty compelling reason it takes somebody out, but I just, I would rather just, you know, have the 38 homes, have the SSA figure whether people want to oppose it or not, and it, it, it flies or doesn't fly based upon, you know, resident objections, rather than inviting people to give us an argument as to why their property shouldn't be included. I just don't think that's a, I, I just don't think we should do that.
I mean, that's the point of the public hearing, though, right?
No, it's a point, the, no, the point of the public hearing would be more, not that my property should be excluded, the public hearing would be, I don't think we should do this. Because I do think that, as Bill said, there's a, there's a rationale for everybody who's accessed the Sixth Street to be included. I mean, obviously, the people can make that argument, but that's not one that I think, from my perspective, I'm going to be very sympathetic to. I think that the, that the argument to be sympathetic to is that 51% of the people don't want it at all. Does that, does that make sense to you?
Yes, it does.
Because I mean, the last thing you want in a situation like this is pitting resident against resident. And so that's, I try to avoid that. And, you know, and I, and back years ago, when we had some special service areas, when, when I was a trustee, we had that issue, in the woodlands, we did not have that issue. With downtown, the parking garage, we have an SSA, we didn't have that issue. So I think that if you can make it so that it seems fair to everybody and the money's manageable, you know, if everybody agrees that this is a good thing for the street, I just, I, I guess, this is maybe a subtle point. Certainly, people could say, I don't want to be part of it, but I don't want to invite that or highlight that as an option, because I think that the 38 homes make sense to them.
I'm, I'm pretty confident, based on our discussions over the last nine, 10 months, that there will be people who do not want to be a part, would prefer not to be a part of it, for whatever reason, as they, they philosophically object to the village not paying for it, they don't have a driveway on Sixth, they don't have a Sixth Street, whatever the reason may be.
Right.
Um, and that's their right to not want to be a part of it, but to Kathleen's point, this is, these are the homes that we've come up with as a group.
Right.
Based on everyone owning property on Sixth Street, we feel you benefit from the street if you have property on Sixth Street.
Right, right, because I guess what I, what I'm thinking of is, I don't know that an SSA could fly, we have like a checkerboard of homes that want to be in and, and homes that want to be out. I mean, I think, I think you got to say, this is the group of homes we've picked, there's a rationale for it, this is the best way to spread the cost. If you object to it, you're one of the objectors, but this is the SSA. Because I mean, it seems to me in a project like this, the more variables you interject into it, the more problems you have. So I, my suggestion is we, we stick with the 38, unless somebody makes a compelling case that my house is just, you know, for some reason, they're just in a unique situation geographically versus Sixth Street. But my suggestion is we don't entertain just taking people out of an SSA and have just people, you know, and so you're left with, you know, instead of 36 homes, you're left with 15 homes, and these people are paying twice as much. And that just, I, I, it just, there's an unfairness element to it, there's a residence against resident element to it, and I think, just becomes unworkable. I mean, I think the board has to stick with the 38 homes and either, if residents don't want it, fine, if residents do want it, fine. When we are championing this for residents and doing it in a way that residents we talk to believe is the fairest way to allocate the costs.
Exactly, and so there will probably be some contention already, but it would be worse if we start plucking people out.
Exactly.
Completely agree with that.
Exactly, and if 51% of the people don't want it, it won't go forward.
That's correct.
And that's, we, we all understand that.
Yeah.
Right.
And we've had a lot of discussions.
Yeah.
So, okay, thank you.
So we have to vote on, somebody have to make a motion, I guess?
We do, yes. Yes. So I move to approve an ordinance proposing the establishment of special service area number 15 in the village of Hinsdale and providing for a public hearing and other procedures in connection therewith.
Second.
Will call vote?
Trustee Pashima?
Aye.
Trustee Braden?
Aye.
Trustee Siffler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Banky?
Aye.
Sash, anything on the tollway?
None.
150th update, Michelle?
The new furniture is on the patio, it looks beautiful, George, thank you. November 19th is our tentative dedication ceremony date, and I'm hoping invitations and more information about that day will be coming out shortly.
Thank you. Staff reports? Assistant petition, anything else, Bill? Trustee comments?
I have something.
Sure.
If that's okay.
Sure.
Um, I'd like to take a second to tell Hinsdale's Historic Preservation Commission, HPC, we have a commissioner actually here in the audience. Last night's meeting, we saw major headway with preservation. Three really important cases were heard in front of the HPC. One, which received a lot of recognition a couple of years ago, was the Frank Lloyd Wright Bagley House at 121 South County Line Road. It took a little bit with their forensic discovery and work to really outline Frank Lloyd Wright's original drawings of the house and how they can renovate to make it modern for this day and age. And there's a wonderful model over here, if any trustees or staff would like to take a look at it. I know that will also be on the November 5th board hearing here. It's, it's really fascinating. And then two other really important cases were heard. One is a house by the middle school, and the owners have really thoughtfully renovated it, and they are applying for landmark status, which I think is a huge win for preservation here in Hinsdale. And thirdly, a home that we've talked about recently, it was in jeopardy of being demolished. A family bought it, it was a win-win, sellers and buyers, in my opinion, came together to save this house, and Michael Abraham presented last night on a really thoughtful renovation of that home. So kudos to the HPC, to its commissioners, to Chairman Bonin, for Bethany, for really steering the HPC, HPC rather, on these preservation incentives under Title 14.
Excellent. Anything else, any other trustees?
Sorry, since you brought it up, I do want to say that I think, I can't speak officially for the HPC commissioners, but I know we all feel that the program that was put in place by the board for the village to be a part of this grant effort for preservation has made a difference. We're getting many more of these types of situations where people are renovating rather than tearing down.
Right.
So occasionally, you'll see some objection to it in the paper, but overall, I think it's been a great turn, and so, thank you.
Great.
Thanks, Bill.
Agreed. Anyone else, any other trustee comments? No reason for a closed session, could I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
Will call vote?
Trustee Pashima?
Aye.
Trustee Braden?
Aye.
Trustee Siffler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Banky?
Aye.
Thank you.